Good evening and welcome to the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Working Session for August 14, 2025. Our first order of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of June 12, 2025, and I so move.
Second.
We move in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved. We're going to move public comment to after the discussion, after the presentations, and so we're going to move right into new business. The first item this evening is an update of the American Rescue Plan ARPA Act-funded Parks and Recreation Field Improvements and Pavilions, and I think we have Ms. McElmahan and Ms. Tholey with us.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Ashley McElmahan, Assistant Township Manager, and I'm joined by Jessica Tholey, Director of Parks and Recreation. So today we are providing an update to the American Rescue Plan Act funds that were committed back in November 14 of last year. As you know, they're a member of Understanding that were approved that outlined some of the projects that the township could do with the remaining ARPA dollars. So tonight, we're going to talk to the field renovations and pavilions, the trail improvements we're still working through to get refined to that number, but we thought it would be important to provide an update to where we're at today and the plan moving forward. So you can see here with field renovations, that was the largest allocation amongst the three we're speaking to, the 1.3 million. We heard from the board that there is, we've been hearing from the board, I should say, for years now, that parks are priority and that we want to touch and improve all of our facilities. So rather than looking at one large project, projects that we could touch upon at several different fields. Additionally, the pavilions, which we'll speak to, coming at multiple sites. So we've engaged Carol Engineering to help us evaluate the parks in addition to Parks and Recreation staff. Carol Engineering is one of our appointed engineers, and they've come out and helped us understand what we can do at those sites, prepare preliminary cost estimates, and will help us work through the bidding of these projects. The field renovations and the pavilions will be RCO, so we'll be putting those out to bid, and we have a timeline that I will speak to right now in regards to that schedule. So as you are aware, we have to spend this money by 12:31-26, or we give it back, and we fully intend on spending every dollar so that we can, you know, make our parks the best there are. So the anticipated schedule for field improvements is where before you tonight. We do plan to bring to you in October an authorization to bid, and a motion to award in December with construction of those field improvements happening between January and April. We want to try to minimize as much as possible the impacts to the teams. We know our fields are extremely loved, and it's difficult to get on the fields, so we want to minimize that impact. For the pavilion and trails, that schedule is going to come a little bit after those field improvements. We're prioritizing those field improvements so that, again, we're not having any major impacts on those fields. So in February, we'll come before you with an authorization to bid with an award hopefully in April with construction, excuse me, that says field improvements, but pavilions and trails through May and August of next year. I also want to just comment before I turn this over to Director Tholey that we are committed to stretching these dollars as far as we can. So there are, what you'll see tonight are improvements, but they involve demolition of fence, removal of bleachers, concrete pads. We're going to do that work in-house and try to use our labor where we can so that we can stretch these dollars as far as possible. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Tholey.
Thank you, Ashley. Good evening, Commissioners. The slides that you're about to see this evening will provide an overview of previous improvements that have been made to the township's active parks, as well as the ARPA-proposed improvements. As you can see from this chart, you will see a list of the active parks that will show the previous improvements that have been done, whether it has been playgrounds, upgrading, resurfacing of courts, resurfacing of, like I said, the tennis courts, and some of the field improvements that have already taken place at some of these parks. In addition, you will see the ARPA-proposed improvements at these parks as well. So all in all, when you take a look at these parks, you will see that with the township investment in the parks, as well as the ARPA improvements, that we will pretty much have touched on every single one of these active parks. Now, this chart does not capture all of the investment that the community has given into these parks, or the additional maintenance that has been given to these facilities with operating dollars. So this slide, you'll see, this is another proposed, you know, of the parks, but it shows a different kind of view of what the improvements will be. It breaks it down a little bit further so you can kind of see what those specific improvements will be at each of these locations. You'll see in the lighting column there for Crestmont and Roychester, those particular locations, they have expressed some interest in updating the lighting at those facilities. That will all be dependent upon what the bid numbers come in at to determine if we will have the available funds to look into those. So first, we'll start off with Albatthor Park. At this location, we are going to be renovating the backstops, which you will see in most of these parks. Most of the parks that are on this list are in need of updating backstops for the youth organizations, as well as bleachers and field benches. You will see that at most of the parks as well. The pavilion, the largest pavilion that is at Albatthor, which holds about 200 people, is probably our most popular facility rental within the park system, so we will be looking at rehabbing that pavilion with updated electrical and some further upgrades there. Ardsley Community Center, you will see, again, the backstops, the bleachers, and the field benches that will be replaced at this location on the two Little League fields. At Ardsley Park, this location, in addition to the backstops, bleachers, and the fence benches, or the field benches, we are looking to do dugouts at this facility, as well as a full field renovation. This field is pretty popular, and it receives pretty much year-round usage, so it was determined that this location would need re-establishment of the soil and grass on this particular field. Conway Field, this field has already received some renovations from the youth organizations by building backstops and some dugouts for the kids, so we will just be extending some of the backstop that they did not put in, but majority of the work at this field location has already been done. Crestmont Park, this location will, like I said, receive the backstops, the bleachers, the field benches, dugouts as well, and this is the one location that if bid numbers come in, would allow us to look at the lighting. Ethel Jordan Park, again, with the standard backstops, bleachers, and field benches. This location, we are looking to put in some park benches, as well as some overhead sunscreens, where those screens can actually be taken down in the winter and stored and put back up in the warmer months, as well as some additional trash cans, and those park benches and the sunscreens will go in between the playground and the field there that's between the ball field. Hollowell Park, this location, we are looking to do a little bit more in terms of fields. In addition to the backstops, bleachers, and the field benches, we are looking to realign the two fields that are located on your right. Those fields, we're looking to align them so they are a safer distance apart from one another, and gives the players a little bit more room for the benches, the bleachers, and spectators, things like that. North Hills Dockerty Park, as you may know, this kind of is two sides of the street there, so we are looking to update the ball fields, as well as include dugouts and replace the gazebo that is currently on the side where the playground is located. At Pembryn Park, we are looking to do a similar arrangement with the sunscreens, the picnic benches, and the additional trash cans. We are looking to put those between the basketball courts and the playground, kind of down where a lot of the activity takes place, as well as the field benches, bleachers, and backstops. This particular location is one of the locations within the township that contains a 90-foot field, which makes it very popular for adult leagues and softball. Roslin Park, this location, in addition to, like many of the others, for backstops, bleachers, and field benches, is another one of the locations that is looked to, to have a complete soccer field re-establishment. Marsden Field, that particular field is heavily used pretty much year-round, and it is in need of new soil and grass in that area. In addition, on the opposite side of Marsden, in between the skate park and the new playground that was installed, we are looking to put a pavilion there with some picnic benches and some trash cans. That seems to be a very popular location, so we thought it would be a great thing to have some area for, you know, some smaller birthday parties.
Is this to the right of the picture?
Yes.
Right there?
Yep. I don't know if you can see it. Right here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, you can.
Can you go back to the outer one?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm trying to... Can you turn your mic up? Your mic?
Flattered you wanted to hear me.
I want you recorded.
So I'm just trying to get the, so the bottom left is the Penn State Field? No.
No, so the two fields that you're seeing that have the color codes, that is B and C field.
B and C.
Yes.
Right, okay.
They're the two fields that are going to receive the renovations.
And I'm literally there six days a week. I should know which one's B and C. I don't. The one that's up by the parking lot?
That is C.
Those, those are not identified for new dugouts as of now, is that right?
Not as of, not as of now.
Okay. Those are falling apart and kind of dangerous, so I just wanted to point that out. So maybe we should...
Expect a phone call from Commissioner Rothman tomorrow with a dugout request.
No, I'm making it now. You can talk about whenever, whatever time allows.
Get a shot.
Well, I mean, all came aside, yeah.
No.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Sure.
The Parks Department was absolutely amazing in dealing with the bazillion requests at Albatthor Park this season. It was...
Most of which come from you.
Most of which are forwarded by me.
Fair enough.
Let's move on to Roychester Park.
Yes.
This location, as you know, is in the process of having the inclusive playground installed. So this is actually a two-part project where it is going to look at Barrett Field, which is the lower field, and the organization that has used that field, along with many other organizations, are looking to actually make more space between the road and that field. If you've been there, you'll see it, there's a large hill that's a pretty steep hill, and it's very close to where the player benches are, as well as the spectator bleachers. So we are looking to possibly move that field, shift it in, and put a retaining wall right in the spot. You can see it right here. So that's what the proposed improvement is. As well as the upper field, we are looking to shift that field in more towards the field to give an opportunity to move that field away from the parking lot more, and offer some additional space away from the inclusive playground, and give more space for the teams and the spectators. Sure.
Just a quick question there. So I don't really have my bearings, but when you talk about a retaining wall and hills, so the kids slide, when we get snow, that, the hill that all the kids use for sledding, sorry, that all the kids use for sledding, will that hat, will the plants have an impact on?
No. That retaining wall, if you think of currently where the backstop and the first base and the third baseline go, this would be along the first baseline of that lower field, which right now is a very steep hill, and if you were to slide down, you go right into the side of their fencing, right there. So that will, they can still sled if they go further down, away from the fencing.
There will be sledding. Good, good.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. This is the other location that if funds permit, we would be looking at some lighting at these fields. Rubicam Park, this recently has had a playground renovation, and it has become a very popular spot within the township for children's birthday parties. So we are looking to install a pavilion with picnic tables at this location. And that is all I have. If you have any questions?
Are there any further questions for either Jessica or Ashley?
Can I offer a comment? I just want to...
Yeah, of course.
...reiterate the comments made about the great job, and I had a lot of fun at the celebration of the renovation of the Rockwell Park at Stratford, great park. Once in a while, I really enjoy being five feet tall because I had a real good time plane, but I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support.
President Heckrem?
Yeah.
I have a question about just timing. You talked about, a lot about the field renovations, and I know that there's 1.3, I think, million, right, that's earmarked for it, and your plan is to have bids by October, right? To put it out for bid by October?
Yes, the board will authorize bid in October, and then the next day, they would likely go live. I think that's October 12.
Okay. But you've engaged Carol Engineering, but are they prioritizing? It just seems to me, is there like a certain amount allocated per field? Are you doing it equally, or are you prioritizing other fields? I'm just, it seems, it's like, the scope of what you're asking Engineering just seems, Carol Engineering just seems like a lot, you know, and is it a wish list and then see what it comes in for? I mean, what's the plan?
I mean, Jess can talk to this, but Parks and Rec first identified some of the needs. We also were trying to prioritize needs across the different fields, which is why you see a consistency between, like, the bleachers, the dugouts, the fencing. In regards to the prioritization, when we get the bids back, I think it's at that point where we would be looking to Parks for their recommendation, and ultimately your recommendation when we seek to award it. We do need to talk to Carol on how we are going to tackle the bids and how they go out. What we have seen be successful in other bids is that we would have add-ons as part of the bid, so that we would, it would be something that we could optionally, optionally award, should we have enough funds. So we are, we are still trying to strategically craft that with them, but I'm sure we'll get there.
So when Carol's looking at it, there are certain musts, and then there's going to be add-ons after that? So we, at the very least, we need this per field, bleachers and things like that?
Correct.
Okay.
And Jess, you want to chime?
Yeah, we, we kind of prioritized it where we see a lot of the active parks, and by that we mean parks that have ball fields, currently have seating areas where there's a lot more active play than a passive park, which might just have a trail, something like that. So when we look at the passive parks, the passive parks really, we'd be looking at some of our trail improvements. So that's why when we focused on the active parks, because they were the ones that were receiving a lot of the activity, where the picnic benches, the bleachers, the dugouts, some of the field maintenance really needed to be updated in those particular fields because they receive so much use.
And do you have a date for Carol Engineering that you expect to see their surveys and their recommendations?
Well, we've, we've received a lot of that, which I have here, and our cost estimates, but essentially, our next step is to, we wanted to get your feedback tonight, and then proceed with them to do some of the topography, start building out what those bid documents are, but they are going to be working on that throughout August into September so that we're prepared. I mean, they will be ready to put out in October, so that's something we're actively looking at, and given the amount of fields, we've been working with them on months, for months on this, but particularly with the two field transitions that Jess spoke to, they're going to be a little bit more involved, but at least some of these facilities are much more straightforward, thanks to the work that Parks has already done and the community organizations.
Okay, I mean, I think the residents of the township really depend on you guys and depend on having great park service, and I just want to, I just want to see it done, you know, and that's why I'm asking about the timelines.
We're trying to, you know, make sure that this project, it's definitely a big undertaking, but we're trying to do it with as minimal impact to as many organizations as possible just because we know that these locations are so heavily used.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other further comments or questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to leave early to get my daughter.
Yes, I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Diana.
Hi, I had a question in reference to Rubicam Park. Have you decided an actual location for the pavilion? Because you just flashed it up real quick, and I didn't see, was there somewhere that was already designated for where you were going to put the pavilion, or you're still trying to figure out what would be the best location?
So when we met with Carol Engineering, they came out and looked at the location and gave us some guidelines as to where they felt an appropriate place and size of the pavilion would be, as well as how many tables would fit under a pavilion. So in that area, as you can see, where Ashley had circled there, that is where the proposed location is. Now, that is not, you know, 100% set in stone, but more so probably with the size, it's probably going to be more accurate. It looks like now they're proposing four picnic tables under that pavilion, but with Carol Engineering, you know, they are working with the size of land and what they feel would be an appropriate size for there.
Okay, then, yeah, can you send me over this information, and also need to know what is the proposed size of the pavilion that they're, you know, they look, because I would like to see that better. I can't really see it on this diagram here, my apologies, but if you can send this over to me so I can look at it with the information of the size of the proposed pavilion, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. And thank you both for your work on this. It was a very good presentation.
No, we care, okay.
Okay, we're going to turn to our last item for the evening, and I'm going to call Mr. Jones forward. This is a discussion of the Abington Township Solid Waste Disposal Services Bid and Refuge Program. We'll go through this, and I'm sure this won't be the last discussion, this is the teeing up we're going to have at this again next month. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing me out tonight. We're going to go over what, how many bids came back, what we put out for bid, and what some of our recommendations might look like. Currently, ReWorld has the contract for disposing all of our trash, to take it from our trash transfer station to their facility, to Trash to Steen Plant.
To the Trash to Steen Plant in Plymouth Township. ReWorld used to be Covana. They went to, through a rebranding, and now their worldwide name has changed to ReWorld. So forgive me if I refer to them as Covana at some points during this presentation. Our contract expired, it was going to expire on August 1st. We got an extension for three months, which is going to expire the end of October. Currently, we are paying 79.35 per tonne to dispose of our refuse, and you'll see the 18,500 tonnes, that is the number, that is our average number of tonnes per year that we are disposing of, so that was used in a lot of the math that you're going to see. The two options we put out to bid were, one, for us to haul our trash to a site and dump it, and the second one was the exact same operation that we have right now, where our trucks go from curbside to our transfer station that we operate on Fitzwater Town Road, dump there, and then ReWorld takes it from there. As you can see on this slide, we had three responsible bids for accepting, direct haul, where we're taking it directly to a site, three responsible bids, and you'll notice that $60 per tonne is much lower than the current $79 that we are paying. However, there's a lot of operational costs that will come with that cost moving forward, and some of the additional costs I'm referring to are fuel, vehicle maintenance, insurance, and the potential of having a slight service change. This is the other option. This is $95 per tonne in year one, and this is the exact same operation that we have now with no service changes. What we're showing on this one is the difference between the two, the two bids, the two responsible bids that came in, and over a five-year period, there would be a $2 million savings if we went with option one, where we were direct hauling, and that does come with some risk and some unknown factors that we're not, that we will not have until we would start that operation. This is just some background. For the last 10 years, we have not raised the refuse fees, and with the, with the fluctuating recycle market going up and down, some years we had some additional funding coming in because of recycling, other years we took a loss on that, and some of the operational costs that we have. We have 18 sidearm refuse trucks that are part of our operation, 12 first-out pieces that go out, six for trash, three for co-mingle, and three for paper, and we have six spare trucks that are used when those, those top-line trucks are out for service repairs or whatnot. And on double days, we take advantage of our spare fleet to get more trucks on the road. When I refer to double days, I'm referring to the days after a holiday. This is showing, what I was referring to earlier was the actual cost to get rid of the trash. What we're looking at here is the actual operational cost, the budgeted amount for the refuse department to operate, and what we're looking at there is year one, for option one, option two, and anticipated capital needs of refuse trucks. You see the $1.2 million, that is for three refuse trucks. These trucks do not come cheaply. This, we're looking at our, our current rates for our refuse. 95-gallon can, $275, that's, that's most of our township, and what it would look like if we raised them, $100 versus $125, the cost per can, if you have a smaller can, would still go up, as you see there, and the 35-gallon would go from $220 to $320, or $220 to $345, depending on which, which change and which, which way we wanted to go with this bid. This is just showing our impact of the refuse budget and a fee increase, and what it would look like and what it would get us. If we increased it, the $100 right there, and that was with us hauling to, to the, to ReWorld in Plymouth, we are still able to put money aside for capital purchases, where right now we would be at a deficit. And this is showing what a $125 per household fee increase would look like, and, and there would be absolutely no service changes, that would be the exact same that we are doing, that we, how we are operating today. This is a comparison where if we did increase from $275 to the $375 or $400, where we, where we rank amongst all our neighbors and comparable-sized communities in Montgomery and Bucks County, and the two closest are Lower Marion and Middletown, as far as being the same size as Abington, and the cost... as Abington, and the cost that other municipalities are paying for either contracted services to pick up their trash and/or picking it up themselves.
Wait, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
To ask, next to the Lower Marion rates, I was just curious about that.
Lower Marion has a base fee, it starts at $443. They offer services where the trash men will get off the back of the truck and go up to your house, bring your cans down. So that's a schedule that just continues to grow, depending on the service that you would want to sign up for.
Do they offer turn-down service in the evening as well? Chocolate on top of?
Lower Marion puts little chocolates on top of your trash can. Thank you, Mike. I, that actually, I did not know that, so, yeah.
Exactly.
So that was a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
We got to digest those numbers over the next month. We'll come back in September's meeting with a recommendation, and to meet our deadline of the expiration date on the current contract, that's where we'll be looking for a vote at that time.
So we basically have two options that we're looking at, right?
Two, two options.
Yep.
At $100 increase.
Right.
Is us hauling ourselves to.
Yes.
The Trash to Steam Plant.
Yeah, and the upside to that is it manages the increase in the cost, but there are added costs associated with fuel and travel and insurance.
Correct. Our trucks have not put that extra miles, you know, in, in history, we're all around, we're running around Abington Township, so the, the long-term cost will not be decided until we have.
No, understood.
Tried that for a few years.
Well, I'm going to open it up. I would, I will just say, first of all, thank you for all of this. I know you and Ashley, you know, worked together on this, this is really important. Just to underscore for the board, we have to take action of September, the contract ends in October, so we have to move ahead. And we're trying to get to, you know, a series of options that we can think through, that will be economically viable, but also continue to provide the level of service that the residents have come to expect, which is my concern with option one, and I would want to see us explore other avenues, of like, what would it take for us to ensure, if we went with option one, that we have recycling service available on all holidays like we do today?
Correct, and that is the big if right now, and the plan that we're working on, on what we could do at that point.
Because I think we'll need to see what that looks like before we can make a recommendation.
Just, just so you all see the big picture, on a double day, every truck we have goes out and gets trash.
Yep.
Now those trucks got to go to Plymouth to dump when they get loaded.
Yeah, it's going to make a car.
And start their routes of getting the recycling up, and it's two days worth of recycling, the date it was missed, plus that day.
Yep.
So there was a, a lot that we got to think about if we.
Do we need more than 12 trucks over an eight-year period if we're going to go with option one?
We, we could, and that wouldn't be determined probably till, till three to five years down the road, on, on what our replacement plan would, would be, or would need to be to support option number one.
Okay. Well, I'm going to open it up, just reminding folks, there's no action being taken tonight. This was a first attempt to get us familiarized with numbers as we work through the next month, making a decision on, you know, how we want to provide this service moving forward. So with that, I'll open it up to see if there are any comments or questions from members of the board. I'll start with Commissioner Rothman, then, Commissioner Weinberg.
Thanks again, as always, for the work you guys do. Trying to picture it again, it's not up there now. Is there an option where the residents do not incur $100 or $125?
There is not, and one of the reasons is, we did not have to raise taxes or rates for the last 10 years. We had a very favorable bid that went out five years ago, and it was so favorable that it, when the first year of the extensions, which would be 2026, ReWorld says, we're not interested in extending this, we're losing too much money. So that's why the new cost has gone from what we're paying $79.35 right now to year one at $95. It's a 20% increase on, on the same operation, just to get, get them to the point where they're not operating at a loss.
So regardless of how favorable some of the other information we seek is, the residents are going to experience?
There's no way around it, yeah.
Nope, just wanted to.
Yeah, the economics, I mean, you can speak to this better than I can, Mike, but the economics of the refuse business have changed considerably, at least, especially during my time on the board. And when we started the recycling program under Ed, I mean, we were making money off of that, and then that.
Yes.
That stopped, and so.
And that's monthly.
Yeah, yeah.
One month it's up on paper, and next month on co-mingle, it just, it fluctuates, and it's so volatile.
I think we just, we need to think about what we need to provide the level of service that we provide in the township, and then we'll figure out how to, how to make that happen.
Yeah, I think that one of the things we've always talked about, again, borrowing your phrase, at least since I've been on the board, which is a long time now, we always talk about, when we talk about taxes or spending public dollars, that there is a standard that we expect, and the trash collection and public works-related stuff is as good as anything we do in the township. So I don't think anybody would want us to lose any of those services as currently provided. But I just did want to make sure that I understood that part, and it is a difficult reality for many people, but it is a very clear reality.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you.
Commissioner Weinberg.
And thank you, and thank you. Everybody gets a thank you.
Do I understand that chart properly, that regardless of the option, option one and option two, you're still looking to set aside 1.2 million for new trucks?
With that increase, we're able to put the money into capital to be able to purchase the trucks that we need, and it was showing the $1.2 million was three trucks in '26, three trucks in '27, and then continue to be able to put money into that capital replacement fund with the increases that we're, we're discussing.
All right, so, but either option, it's the same, same thing?
The capital costs aren't any different.
Right, they're not any different, okay.
Correct.
The second part is with the new contract, is that, are we still within the budget for what you, for the rest of the year?
Yes, with the increase of, of somewhere around $24,000 additional a month than we're paying now for the remaining quarter of the year, it all indicates that we should be able to, to stay within the budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Schreiber.
This is a little bit off-subject, does this affect the, excuse me, does this affect the transfer station at all?
Option one does. Option one, we would no longer be operating the transfer station. We would be going directly from the curbside pickups, truck gets loaded, gets his route done, he drives to Plymouth, so it does affect that operation over there.
So what a.
We wouldn't have a transfer station.
Like, it doesn't, I mean, do we own that land?
We own the building, we own the property. We have one full-time operator that is there. If we would go to that option, we'd have to absorb that employee into the refuse department, and we would just do that through attrition. But if that's the way that we, we decide we want to go, it would more or less be mothballing that, that facility until we found another option for, for, for that Fitzwater Town Road site.
Do outside townships use it also?
They do not. They, they currently do direct haul, and we're the only ones. They, they decided to go out it at about 10 years ago.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Follow up on that, so we're the last one doing it that way? With the transfer station, like, in-house?
What's that?
We're the last one within in-house transfers, like, of the neighbors?
Yes, when it was a trash consortium, all the municipalities, everybody dumped there. When the time came that the county was no longer supporting the site, Abington was the only one that stayed. Lower Marion has their own transfer station also, that just Lower Marion dumps into and ReWorld services them.
And I'm willing to pass the baton to Commissioner Spiegelman, but one of the questions, I think, do we have any idea what we could ever do with that space? Is there any benefit to it? Is there any financial gain in getting rid of that? The current operation?
That is something that, that we were discussing today. We really never looked into that, what it would be, what it could, what it could be used for, if anybody would have interest in it. So, so I don't know an answer to that question tonight.
We'll have to look into it for sure.
I mean, if there's something.
Yeah, yeah, it's an asset. It's an asset.
Yep.
Um, Mike, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation. Just as a review, and I'm sorry, I, I'm blanking from one of the earlier slides, when is the, what's the, when is the last time that refuse fees were raised? How long ago was it?
It was 2015.
11.
2015, okay.
All right, I thought it was, yeah, all right, okay. I just wanted to review that.
Yes, you were on the board.
I was on the board, I've been, my memory is clearly gone.
So are you.
We had the consortium.
We had the consortium.
We had a consortium.
The important thing for us to remember is the whole model upon which this approach was based has changed. I mean, so the foundation that we had for this economies of scale is, they're gone. And so, I mean, we're facing a new world, and we're going to rely on our experts to help guide us to make sure that we make the right decision from a service standpoint and an economic standpoint. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, we have, I mean, keep the information coming, and if, I mean, if you guys have additional detail that you want to share with us, you know, I mean, in the coming, you know, before the next meeting, certainly, but, you know, in short order, you know, just work with Ashley and Chris.
You got it.
And have that distributed. We want to make sure that we.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Jump on this, right? Okay, so I'll open it up for public comment on either of the two agenda items that were presented this evening. Anyone in the room wish to speak? We have one person on Zoom that wishes to speak, so we'll go there.
Laura Lehman Metabrook, and so my first concern is I did not see the Boy Scout preserve anywhere on that list, and while it doesn't get, you know, sporting goods, it is in horrendous shape, horrendous shape. It's actually, the weeds are growing out into the road, it's never been that bad, and we spent a fortune taking it all down to the mud. So I would like to see something happen, please add that into the list and tell us what's going to be done there. It is a nature preserve, not a sports arena, but something needs to be done. So please, don't spend this money without considering that part, too. And in light of the funds here with the wastewater disposal and the parks, and the budget coming up, I want to make a strong plea, please, it's been ignored year in and year out, and we need to change that. The residents have asked you to actually present the documents for the budget before the presentation. Having a presentation with no documents, I think the commissioners received them just before the presentation. They're voluminous, people, anybody who really is serious about looking at them needs time to look at them, and if you wait until afterwards, that whole first meeting becomes useless to residents who have so little time, because if that is in October, then November and December, it literally can't be changed. So please, so that we can see these things that you're funding, please give us the documents in time. Okay, we have asked again and again, and we're not getting anywhere with that, and I cannot understand why you would not want to do that kind of a thing exactly the way the residents want it. You have the documents, they exist, the commissioners have them, there's no reason the public shouldn't have them. So please do that this time. And, and so I think it's, it's been great that we've been able to keep the waste disposal fees low for so long, so I hope this is not the start of something new, where they're going to be less controllable, but it is wonderful that for 10 years, you've been able to keep them as low as you have. So congratulations on that. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.